Alright, thank you for all this meeting for the school committee to order. Please rise and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright. Any public comments? I don't see any. Alright, anyone have any communication? Big lead.
Big lead.
Nobody? Alright, cool. Go down. And motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
Someone?
Julie?
Second.
Megan? All in favor? Are any discussion? Alright, all in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
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 Alright, and then against? Nothing, so the motion passes, great. Uh, chairs report, I don't really have much other than to say, uh, big thank you to all the voters, um, for coming out to the town meetings Monday night, that was great. Uh, I said enough, uh, I went through a long story and, uh, thank you on social media, but, I think, uh, the committee probably owes a special thanks to Jackie Bosses and Kyle Burns, the presidents of the PTOs and the towns, uh, for getting all the parents together and involved, and hopefully, uh, we stay that way. Um, I already talked to them, I'm sure they'll be more involved as we go in the next few months and into next year. So that's good stuff, but I think, um, based on the way the votes went, the numbers of people voting, I think people are pretty excited and, uh, ready to support the schools, so I think that was a good thing.
Thanks to the town staff checking in all those people.
Yeah, it took a little while there in Boston to get going up, a lot of people.
Long line, yeah.
At least all voters you have. They said the auditorium.
The auditorium, they thought, they estimated about four hundred people in the auditorium, but, um, I mean, it was, well, there was like three, she told us, three hundred something registered voters that came in.
Oh. I don't know exactly how many were in Berlin, I know one of the votes that I saw had two hundred and one votes cast. That wasn't the school vote, uh, the school votes were one eighty, about two hundred and two probably. But, uh, yeah, good stuff. Uh, okay, Caroline is not here tonight, she couldn't make it, that's absolutely fine, no problem. Uh, subcommittee reports, I don't know if we have any subcommittee reports, Megan, no. Uh, nothing from success, uh, policy, we don't have a report to make, uh, Lori's not here, but we are gonna be taking a look at, I brought them with me, a couple of, uh, fundraising and cash donation policies that we have, and I'll speak more to that during the votes. Um, alright, so that brings us to Carol.
Yeah, I just had a couple of things, um, if you take a look at my report, that there's a request, Daniel Joseph, who's working with us on the culture of the graduate work, is coming in to the school student observations in mid-May. He, in addition to going to the classrooms, he's going, he wants to meet with focus groups, to meet with student focus group, uh, staff focus groups, and parent focus groups. So, we were talking about the possibility of asking the school committee members to, like, put together a group of five individuals that you think might be willing to sit with him for about a half hour, forty-five minutes, and kind of give your thoughts around whatever I think is what the school needs, where you feel the culture of the school is. But I feel like all of you have a pulse on that more than I do, so if you want to let me know, I put by May twelfth, Friday, twelfth, so that's next week, if you could just give an idea, um, and I put the times in there too, so you have know the time that you'd have to come over to the school, to me. And, and we can catch up again, any questions, just touch base with me. To that, that I wanted to take care of, also just a reminder about the retreat in July, the town event. He's gonna be contacting you around first week of June, just to get to know each of you. Do you want to do like a Zoom call instead of the time, we can work on that together, um, with him, with you to set up the time, because that's really good talk with him, just so he comes and he has a sense already of reference of money and the work that he does. So that's taken care of, and the, the other piece of, just quickly, Nancy Philkey from the Boylston Historical Society called me this afternoon, so excited, I just, I, I just wanna share this with you before we go on. She, so, she, I said, send me an email, it's lengthy, but I'll just give you the gist of it. Exciting news, the new publication Boyleston Civil War Veterans, a book that includes well documented initial research by Tohantos students, has been published by Boyleston Historical Collaborative. Um, that's the Boyleston Historical Commission, Historical Society, and the Boyleston Public Library, through the support of the Boyleston Cultural Council. It started out, um, as a conversation that Nancy and I had several years ago, just my other role, and it was around getting students of Tohantos more involved with the community. Students did research on civil war veterans that were part of the town, their history, and like, kind of brought them back to life again, and gave them sort of that honor of who they were and what they fought for. So they did a presentation, um, on Zoom that spring after they had done their work. Um, it was well received by the community, anyway, they took that information and now they published this book. So she's gonna get me a copy, well, I asked her, she said she's gonna get one each week, all the students involved, she's gonna help them bring a copy over to me, I'll share that with you, but I thought that that was so exciting to, to send that out for the community, the school, so.
Is that something that's gonna be, uh, like, published and for sale?
Yes.
Are the current, are the students still in school?
No, they've already graduated, they were actually, um, last year's graduates, I think a number of them changed.
And that's pretty cool, I don't know if any of them are around who want to come in and talk about it?
They can come with the team, because they'll be back from college, that's what she wants to wait to give them their, give them the votes, and so we got, and asked, I know a number of them, like, ask them if they'd like to come in, so, okay, I'll be happy to do that.
So I just, another, uh, no positive, no, no one, just came into the chat.
Do you have an aspect of that, do you want to say anything about?
Oh, the aspect of that, that's just a report that they send in three or four times a year, I'm getting used to learning about how they operate. That's, it's just a document for you to, I think you typically vote to approve it.
Yeah.
We don't do anything on that, it's part of the board.
Cool, alright, well, thank you Carol, uh, Nancy, do you have anything to say on the budget?
Um, I just wanted to cover some stuff that you guys will be voting on, if that's okay, to go through them really quick.
Yeah.
Um, first one is the collaborative oil bid. So Berlin Boyleston is one of several area school districts that we participate in a collaborative procurement for heating. We do this through the French River Education Center. By participating in this procurement as a group instead of individually, districts can aggregate their volume and secure more advantageous pricing than each district can do on its own. So this year, we've had several bids, we, um, kept repeating it and declining them, because we were hoping for a better outcome, especially because the market was fluctuating so much this year. We finally received a bid that we were looking for, um, and we're happy with it, and it was awarded on March thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, to Dennis K. Burke for three dollars and four cents per gallon. This cost increase is well in line with what we estimated and factored into our fiscal year twenty-four budget. Last year's price was two dollars and ninety cents, um, so with the way that the market's been fluctuating, I'm really pleased with this price. So we will be asking the committee for acceptance of this oil bid. Um, I also have the excess and deficiency certification, so the Mass Department of Revenue Division of Local Services certified our district's excess and deficiency balance as of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. The amount is for three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars. This is a small decrease from last year by twelve thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars. This is just due to how miscellaneous receivables were applied to the operating budget. Um, you can find the official communication with the Department of Revenue on, in the school committee's drive. So I'm asking, uh, the committee for acceptance of this certification. There's two grants that we have received, they're both through MIA, there's a risk management grant and a wellness grant. MIA is a Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Association, it's a nonprofit and organization serving its membership consisting of municipalities and regional school districts. And we also use them to procure our healthcare benefits and insurance offerings. So annually, they offer these grants to their members, and we apply for them. So the risk management grant is intended to reduce the risk of a claim for the insurance carrier. So we applied for this, we received six thousand dollars, that's being applied towards the Boyleston Elementary School Facility Assessment. The wellness grant is also offered annually, it's provided to its members with resources for creating and maintaining great places to work. Members are encouraged to invest in projects or equipment that promote a good workforce and a healthy worker culture. This year, we received ten thousand dollars, and we are using it in the district offices. We updated the kitchen area with a new refrigerator, coffee maker, and a new toaster oven. Everyone in the district received new office chairs that are, um, good for your posture, they're like really nice, ergonomic office chairs, thank you. Um, we, we also purchased new visitor chairs for the entryway, and some additional visitor chairs for people's offices who didn't have chairs for people to come in. Um, and we're ordering new pictures for our walls, and also some tables, so we're very excited, we're making it really pretty in the district offices.
That's good.
So we'll be, we're asking for acceptance for both of these grants. Um, we also received a donation from NPB, I guess it's the third Boyleston LLC, for thirty-five thousand. Um, the donation letter is in your drive, and it states that the funds are to be used by the Berlin Boyleston School District for the facility assessment of Boyleston Elementary Schools. The donation letter states that it may be expended under the direction of the school superintendent with approval by the Board of Selectmen of Boyleston. The Board of Selectmen did accept this donation for thirty-five thousand for this facility assessment at BES to be expended under the direction of the superintendent on their need on January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. So now we just need the school committee to approve it, and we are good to go. And two more, well, one more, is we received a grant from the Department of Education, it's a nutrition equipment assistance grant. Um, these, it was four thousand thirty-nine dollars, and these funds were applied towards a heating mobile cabinet for our Berlin Memorial School. And lastly, in the drive, you will find the fiscal year twenty-two audited financial statements. These are standard review, um, that need your approval yearly, and they're in your drive for your review. And those are my updates, I don't have a budget update at this time, except for fiscal year twenty-four budgets approved?
Yeah, it passed on Monday night, so. Onto this, on, on to other things, alright. Thanks Nancy.
You're welcome.
Uh, that brings us to business items, pretty quick. Um, so, uh, Julie, is there anything on the scholarship award, Mary and Hoffman, or is it a week too early for that?
Um, we're ten too early for it, so the committee just has to approve, uh, I checked with the, um, treasurer from Berlin, with the money's in there. The teachers have the award.
So do that in June?
Yeah, I was hoping June was perfectly fine.
So A, we'll move to June. Alright. Uh, the school committee calendar, could I have a motion to approve the school committee calendar for the school year twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four? Uh, actually, now this is a first read, first read, sorry. Yep, first read, uh, does anybody have any questions, have you looked at that? You have looked at it, or you have?
I've looked at it, I don't have any questions.
Alright.
It's always so hard.
Yeah, it's tough, tough.
So we're just starting for the year.
Yeah, the only thing that's different, uh, it's still second Tuesdays most months, I think, uh, you know, when it gets to this time of year, with the town meetings and things, it's kind of, we do the best we can to schedule, but on the fly, it might need to change. Uh, the time is moved earlier, I think it's, the time is at five o'clock right now, but that's not set in stone. The committee can discuss and figure out whatever the committee wants to do. Uh, I think five o'clock is good with the administration, right? Yeah. Um, what's it, the official workday, was that ended at like three, four?
Does it ever end?
No, you, yes, we work, we work later, but business hours, I guess. So hanging around till six-thirty is tougher than hanging around till five.
Yeah.
Mostly the principals and then, um.
Yeah, five would be great, just because we get here so early at very.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then.
My, my only hesitation, aside from my own, but it's, like, if someone's gonna come to a meeting for a couple of comments, like, people get out of work at five, so I would hesitate to be right at five, maybe five-thirty would allow more of the way people to get here, but I just, you know, um, to participate and watch and.
Okay. So that's off the first read, so you've got it there, the drive, take a think about it, and we'll put it on for vote in June.
Yeah, that's also really hard for people that help coach the town, too.
Yeah. Yeah, that, yeah, that could be those weeks, that could be.
Yeah, I think it's, it's, you know, school committees, it's one night a month.
I believe so.
Yeah, except for these last seven.
This has been a, this has been a, since November, this has been a different, unique year with the.
Yes, yeah, well, yeah.
But, yes, usually, once February, we know this too.
Right.
May with the town meeting, who knows otherwise, usually.
And plus two coaches usually, I mean, I know when I coach, I pick around.
Yeah.
So this workaround, I would say.
That's why that's.
I would say to make it easier for the principals and staff, I think, earlier.
Another reason we schedule the whole year at the same time.
Yeah. I mean, I would do four, but like, I, I do hear what you're saying, Jack, I just feel bad, like, the principals, school is out at three.
Right.
So like, if we have a principal that lives an hour away, they're not going home. You know what I mean? And then it's, it's just, and, you know, like, for our staff, that it's a long day, we have a lot, you know. But I, I think five's a good compromise, um, because I think if you do want to make a public comment, you've got to plan ahead and.
I don't know, I mean, I think five fifteen might, might be a better compromise, just to allow people to leave work and actually exit out the door.
Maybe we could move public comment on the agenda, do we have to do it first?
No, we don't have to.
So we can always have it on the agenda, maybe we could have it on the agenda for like the five-thirty thing, do it after the reports or something like that?
That's okay.
That's a great idea.
Sure.
So, I, I mean, I'm just saying, that way we can, because then we're out of here, like, everyone can go home and have dinner.
Yeah.
I'm a big proponent for meals at their appropriate times. I know.
What's that?
People are friends, it's all the way here.
Will we come, public comment till later, like, between the reports and the business items, might be a decent thing to do, just because, uh, we usually discuss what's gonna be voted on before, you know, we get reports like Nancy just gave me, that, yeah, I can see that working, sure.
Alright, and I mean, the reports aren't really just for us usually, updates, you know, if somebody wants to listen, they can livestream in.
But I mean, like, when there's a vote coming, like Nancy just gave us information about a few votes that are coming, if someone wants to make a comment before we vote, because we don't really truly discuss it until we've got the motion.
So we make the motion, so we can do it just like right before we do the votes.
Alright, um, yeah, so, think about that, we'll have a big discussion next month. Uh, the policy, subcommittee, the policy there, the grievance process, so this one, Lori's not here, Lori has all the information on this. Would you guys have questions for Lori, do you want to hold this one, do you want to vote on it now? We will do.
Hold the harassment.
Yeah, it is the grievance process.
I remember, you know what, it's, it's the third time we're seeing it.
Yeah. And the grievance, the document, that's near with people's name on it, I mean, my biggest thing is two different people to complain to. That's there, yep.
Yeah, no, that's on, yes, so I'm so worried about that.
You want to take the vote, you think?
Yeah.
Alright, may I?
I could, are you good with it, Jess?
I've already read the other document two times.
Alright, so let's, let's do it, do you have a motion to approve the, uh, policy AC, non-discrimination policy, including harassment and retaliation, grievance process for Title IX complaints?
Someone?
Jess?
Second, sorry.
Julie? Alright, let's talk about it. Uh, anybody have any discussion?
I think it was thoughtfully done, it's really specific.
Alright.
Nicely done.
Any others, Jess, do you want to say anything?
No, I mean, I'm just happy to see that, you know, two people in the case of conflicting interests.
Yeah. Alright then, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, against? Alright, motion passes. Um, may I have a motion to approve the seventh grade out of state field trip? And is it the trip or the application?
Do you want to, I have something from that, which I'll maybe.
Yeah.
Um, so the seventh grade team, um, has an out of state field trip to Roger Williams Park Zoo. They like to go on June second, they will use their content knowledge of ecology to complete a scavenger hunt consisting of questions on specific exhibits, riddles, and a collection of photos they must take. They really love this part of the trip, and they will also get some free time to visit the animals in their small groups with a chaperone. They chose this zoo because most students have not frequented it, um, and they plan to be back by two o'clock for a regular bus and parent pickup.
Anybody have any questions regarding all that?
So we just have to vote because they're technically leaving the state, even though it's probably closer than.
Yeah.
Okay, I was just thinking that.
Uh, alright.
I only had one question, but I think it's gonna align with that conversation later, just about money being used for field trips, and I could see on the form that it was come from student activity, it was student funds. Um, to help, I mean, I guess it's a greater conversation that money's not earmarked necessarily for field trips.
So is it, is it the particular classes' money, the class of?
That's what I just saw, I saw twenty-twenty-eight.
It's a class of two thousand twenty-eight and student-funded, so they must be charging.
There's a fee.
Yeah.
Twenty-five dollars a student.
No, there's that, and I think it says a student fund.
Yeah, it's both, yeah.
Yeah, it's both, that's what I'm saying. And it's a bigger conversation, like, if they have an active student activity account, and they, the teacher wants them to field trip.
Well, then, doesn't the student, doesn't the class have, like, officers that decide what to do with their, that money?
Not at that, well, at age level.
No.
Uh, uh, upper levels they do, very upper level, not in middle school.
Where does the fund come from, because like, upper grades is field, like, um, raising.
Fundraising.
Yeah, I'm trying to start the word, yeah.
So you, so the elementary age kids that raise money, K to five, it will stay in their class accounts the whole way through, and then when they leave fifth, it comes up to Tohantos right sound.
Yeah.
And then it goes into that class account.
But someone's there, like, there's an advisor or somebody there, is it the teachers, principals, decide what the money goes to, so I don't know.
Well, we have, we have a treasurer for the school, so.
Yeah, alright. Does that answer the question?
It, no, I think it's a bigger conversation, like, so seventh grade gets money taken out because they go on this awesome field trip. Let's say the sixth grade, I don't know, I, I don't know, it's, should the student activity account money, should that all be outlined where, should, so year over year, if they have a field trip each year, should that money come with student activities? Or should that student activities fund, like, the prom, graduation?
Student, that's what student activities is for, right?
Field trips.
The activities is for field trips, and, and, for activities, anything that students do outside of the curriculum aspect.
Yeah, but isn't our field trips curriculum one?
I guess it, it.
So, yeah, I think it's a bigger conversation.
Principal in the superintendent, whether, which bucket falls into.
Yeah.
But I can, we don't, we, I can tell you in next year's budget, if you're familiar with it, we did, we did budget for field trips.
Right, okay.
I know, and I honestly, in all the schools I've been at, I've never seen field trips be funded from the general budget, it's always funded from student activities.
Okay.
So, like you said, the money follows them each year.
Yeah.
And through fundraising, raising, and I don't know if they pay class fees, this, they're pretty young.
They went to high school.
They, yeah, so they, so that's early, so that's usually what pays for it. Or the class advisor kind of just, you know, figures it out, how much each family owes.
Okay.
I don't know how much they have into the account at this particular time. And then if they receive donations that are to be earmarked, that's when they go over to the business office to be held. So then they won't be used mistakenly on something that's appropriately. Does that help a little bit?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm very familiar with it now, because in each class, we know that all works, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, may I have a motion to approve the seventh grade out of state field trip?
So moved.
Megan? Julie?
Yeah, mine.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Nothing, motion passes, okay. Uh, may I have a motion to appoint Joseph Michael back, I hope I said that name correctly, as BBRC District Treasurer for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four?
Someone?
Julie?
Second.
Megan? Any discussion?
Just for Jess and Lisa, he's been doing it for like ten years.
Yeah.
Um, more, more, maybe more, um, he's lovely, um, he does it for another district, so he's experienced, I believe, he's retired from, he was some type of accountant or financier, he had some type of job applicable to being a treasurer, but I don't believe it's a full-time thing, right, it's a part-time thing, he comes and writes the checks.
Every week, really.
Yeah.
He signs the checks and reviews, I think, everything that's done.
So that's his position now, or is that?
Yeah, he's been doing it for years.
Let's reappoint him now.
We're reappoint, we have to reappoint him every year, so, yeah. And he doesn't usually come to the meetings, I know, uh, I had never met him, and I signed the warrants, and finally, the last time I was there, he just happened to be there, um, so I got to meet him, and he was great. So, yeah. And very experienced.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Alright, motion passes. Uh, now may I have a motion to, uh, approve the excess and deficiency?
So moved.
Megan?
Yeah, second.
Julie, this is what Nancy just talked to us about.
Yeah, this is the.
Thank you.
Yep. Any additional questions for Nancy? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Okay, motion passes. Uh, may I have a motion to approve the, uh, oil bid at three dollars and four four two cents per gallon from Dennis K. Burke?
Someone?
Julie?
Sorry.
Jess? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Uh, may I have a motion to approve the MIAA Wellness Grant for ten thousand dollars?
Someone?
Julie?
Second.
Megan? Uh, any discussion on this? And these are grants, who applied for the grants, is that Nancy, you did? Excellent, thank you very much.
I got you a free time, and that was awesome.
Yeah, we had your time. Uh, alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Alright, motion passes. Um, may I have a motion to approve the MIAA Risk Grant for ten thousand dollars?
Someone, can we change that to six?
It's six, alright, sorry. May I have a motion to approve the MIAA Risk Grant for six thousand dollars?
So moved, thank you, second.
Megan, Julie, any discussion on that?
Um, oh, sorry, no discussion.
No? Alright, you can if you want, it's okay, it's allowed.
No, nothing.
Go ahead and taco vote. Alright.
I was about to say aye.
Okay. Alright, all, all in favor, here's your chance, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, against? Alright, motion passes. Uh, now, uh, motion to approve the acceptance of the Nutrition Equipment Assistance Grant for four thousand thirty-nine dollars.
So moved.
Megan?
Second.
Jess? Any discussion on this one?
I have one thing, that's specific just to the kitchen and food service.
That's correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Alright, motion passes. Before we get into, so the next two are cash donations, right? Not grants, they're actual donations. Um, so, I've got, I've got our fundraising and cash, uh, get all public gifts to the schools, KCD policy. So, I remember going through these policies and updating them last year or the year before with, uh, Bob and Susan, I believe, was the one, really. Uh, the KCD Public Gifts to the Schools was last approved and updated in twenty-eighteen, I do remember looking at it. We thought it was fine at the time. This one says, uh, superintendent has authority to accept all gifts and offers, uh, in the case of gifts from industry, business, or special interest groups. No extensive advertising promotion can be involved, uh, with the donation, gifts that will involve changes to school sites. Require school committee approval, and it says, uh, it does say gifts will automatically become property of the school system. Any gift of cash, which. Any gift of cash, which is what we're involved with here, uh, whether or not intended by the donor for a specific purpose, will be accepted by vote of the school committee, handled as a separate account, and expended at the discretion of the committee as provided by law. So we need to look at this, I'm gonna take this to the policy, so committee, uh, with Lori, hopefully next week. And we do need to update it, because there was, I don't know if you guys are familiar, there was an issue recently with a cash donation from twenty twenty, I believe, right before COVID happened, where fundraising was done for nature's classroom. Then, a lot of business in Boylston agreed to match some funds, donated to it very generously. Then nature's classroom was canceled because of COVID killing everything, shutting everything down. That trip didn't happen. Then, what was it, about a year later, October of the following year, the organizer of the fundraiser came to school committee, said, we've got this money, want to donate it. And apparently, that was done for the specific class. I think, was it twenty seven, class of twenty twenty seven, I believe? So when they made the donation to the school committee, it was specifically done for the class of twenty twenty seven. I don't really remember it, but the minutes are there, it was approved and accepted, so it's with the class. There was an issue. One of the donors from a business in Boylston was, something happened, someone had a question. That question was confirmed that the money's with the class, but that still led someone to have some misunderstanding that it was not gonna stay with the class. Person asked for the three-year-old donation money back. That's, you know, not really a good, a good thing. Uh, so I think we need to strengthen the language in this policy, is what I'm trying to say. And so, and, you know, in finance, banking, all these different industries, you have these procedures and policies. They call them different things, but basically it's know your client type of checks, where you do, where you verify where the money's coming from. Is the person giving the money legally allowed to give that money? How is the money raised? It wasn't from any sort of illicit activity, you know, money laundering type of thing. I don't know that we need to go that far, but we definitely should be probably getting more documentation when we get these cash donations. So I just want to let everybody know we are gonna take care of that, so we don't have people donating, for one thing, thinking their money is gonna be used for whatever they decided to donate for. Then, even though the policy says it, you know, they, we're not gonna spend that money on something else. It's not like a bait and switch type of situation, right? We're gonna honor the donor's wishes. So I think we just, we need to step up the language. That's what we're gonna do.
So with the CRE donation grant, like it came on a letter.
Yeah.
Perhaps it's something you look at like, you know, certain amount.
We're gonna require, yeah, we're gonna require some type of letter from the person and make whatever documentation, like, if it comes from an individual person, they give a check, they write in the memo, the check, what they want the donation for, that's, that should cover it, right? But in cases like this, where it comes from a business, or it comes from a fundraising effort, and they do like a GoFundMe or something like that, right? Like, if they're asking people to give money, we should make sure that that money they gave was raised, you know, honestly. And when they turn around and give that money to the schools, make sure that the schools know what the fundraising effort was, and that we use it in whatever spirit the fundraiser was done, you know?
So like on the GoFundMe, there's, I mean.
Usually it said.
A GoFundMe, right?
Exactly, that would, that would be enough, yeah, but we don't have language in the policies that actually cover that, so we're gonna have to add some stuff. So that will be coming for you to take a look at, we'll have it in June.
The other thing I wanted to say about the GoFundMes, they're like a really slippery slope, because unless they're tied to a not-for-profit organization, when you donate to a GoFundMe, it's actually not tax deductible. It's not considered giving to charity.
Yeah.
You know, it, there could be a situation, so I, I don't know, you know, the one that the school set up. I don't think the school set it up on that thing.
This isn't school, this is outside group, so we actually have the next policy. Yeah, you're exactly right.
Mm-hmm, so you have to be very careful about how money is moved from groups, because sometimes if people are just giving to a GoFundMe, it doesn't mean you're giving to a charity. So I don't know if a charity was set up and people were giving to that through GoFundMe.
We're probably not gonna get that involved in it, because it's some outside organization, they go do what they do, we're not involved in it.
Well, just, it'll be at the end.
They're then making a donation to the schools, that's the point where we need to make sure they're legally allowed to. You know, we don't wanna be getting requests three years later from people saying, give me my money back, I'm not gonna work with you again, you know, we're not, that's not what we want. But the next policy, KCDA, covers community fundraising for school. You can look it up online, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, it's pretty lengthy, but, um, so there are certain situations. If the committee has recognized a group, like a PTO group, right? They're gonna go into fundraisers, that's fine, we, we trust the PTO groups, they're gonna do it, but the other groups, like, you know, nature's classroom, parents get together and they think it's a good idea, let's raise some money. Then someone goes out and says, raise money for BBRSD class of whatever. People giving money, that sounds to them like the schools are endorsing this fundraiser for whatever reason, but they're not. In order for that to happen, those groups technically are supposed to come to the committee to get permission to tell them what they're gonna do about, which nature's classroom has done, right? So we have, we do have a policy for that, so we're gonna look at that one, see if we can kind of match the two, and make sure that there's solid stuff. And whenever somebody does come to us saying, we want to fundraise for this event, we can just hand them this and be like, alright, here's the procedure, here's the policy, this is what you gotta do to make it official.
What kind of act, I think also it would be important, once this is all approved, to keep the documentation together, including any fundraising letter that went out, the original letter, so we all have to have that in place, and that's part of what we need to keep.
Yeah, we should have, uh, you know, I know Lisa's working on cleaning up the drive for us, doing good stuff there, should be an easy spot to find, right?
One other thing, and you can fit it somehow into the policy as we rewrite it, is if you have something like a GoFundMe, and it's a party that's not the school doing the fundraising, say they raise five thousand dollars, but we, the school ends up getting three, there has to be wording in there that we're not responsible for the difference.
Yeah.
We're responsible for what's given to us by that party, so we just have to somehow figure that in there.
Yeah, because, because once that party gives the school money, that party is giving the school money, not the fifty different donors that gave them money, right? So like.
Still one that they'll fall back on us.
Yeah, a hundred parents give fifty bucks each to nature's classroom, I'm just picking on you because that's what I'm like.
No, I think makes sense, yeah, that's relevant.
And then they come and give us the equivalent of twenty five dollars per parent. Where'd the other twenty five dollars go? Not our business, not our job to, we're saying,
God, I got it.
Thank you for the twenty five dollars per, per kid, we appreciate it, that's what the check is for. If, we gotta make sure we're legally on, on the ball on this, right? Because we can't be a wild.
That's why GoFundMes are top.
I'm curious, like, because like BEF and PTO, like those are five oh three, I assume, on the bottom line.
Yeah.
Yeah, so like if BEF.
They could be through them, like.
You have a BEF.
They do, yeah, yeah.
It could be, but BEF isn't gonna use a GoFundMe because they don't wanna pay half in fees. That's why I said GoFundMes are very slippery slopes.
So I want, but I'm curious, like, because we already have those, you guys already have those set up, so if, if someone want to raise funds, we encourage them to go through the PTO or go through the BEF, because you're already set up as a five oh three, and just have like earmarked those particular funds for that particular.
Those groups have, they have to spend the funds in accordance with their bylaws, I believe. So they're set up in, as a not-for-profit, and I don't think they can just say, oh, we're gonna give to Carol and the school to do whatever they want, like.
No, no, like.
They have to say, nature's classroom, use that. So yeah, PTO can run nature's classroom, yes, for sure, yes, they could, you say, PTO, can you help do for nature's classroom? BEF, can you do, yeah, because they are, BEF does grants, they could do computers or whatever.
So the first part of the fundraising policy says, um, you know, persons or organizations desiring to conduct fundraising for school programs may do so through fundraising groups officially recognized by the school committee. That would cover BEF, PTO, stuff like that, right? It also, but it does allow for other groups, so it says, or they may seek approval of the school committee in advance of undertaking independent fundraising on behalf of the school or district. So it does cover that, right? But I think it's more the, the part where it's given to the school, once it's given to the school, then it becomes our responsibility to know what it's to be used for, and make sure that it is used that way, right? So we definitely want to keep that in mind, but that brings us back to that, doesn't, the documentation and information we have for these next two items is in the drive? It's, should be all set, it looks okay to me.
Yeah.
Everything's good, Nancy mentioned this, so could I have a motion to approve the donation from Northbridge CRE for thirty five thousand dollars for the BES facility assessment specifically, um, for the BES facility assessment?
Second.
Jess, Julie? Alright, now any discussion here about the letter, you also have the letter, Nancy gave us a, uh, information about it. So the letter says, the letter is actually addressed to the Boylston Town Board, Board of Selectmen, says, in conjunction with the superintendent can spend the money. I think originally that was the plan, it was gonna go to the town, we were just gonna send out the invoice, right?
Yeah.
Uh, but now they're giving it directly to the schools.
Yeah.
A check is made up, the copy of the check is in there as well, made up to the district. Uh, so that's, looks all the way forward to me, uh, but if anybody has any questions about it.
Can I just, the two policies you mentioned, can you just circle those letters?
Oh yeah, KCD and KCDA. The K group in there covers all sorts of community relations stuff and finance stuff, so. Out of the policy folder on the website, which is at bbrsd.org, from the school committee, online policy manual, it's searchable. It's actually very easy to use, if anybody can go check it out. Uh, but yeah, I got it printed there too. Alright, so we've got the motion to accept this one, uh, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Alright, that motion passes, now may I have a motion to accept nature's classroom donation in the amount of?
Six thousand three hundred ninety one dollars and fourteen cents.
Six thousand three hundred ninety one dollars and fourteen cents.
So moved.
Megan? Jess? Any on this one? This, the documentation we received on this one specifically says it is to remain with the nature's classroom trip for future classes to use if there's money left over after this one.
Alright, there's no money left over.
Yeah.
There's none.
Yeah, there won't be.
But, it might be a dollar that comes in last minute.
You never know, it might match, yeah, so.
If you're listening, you might need a little more. Can you explain?
Why that is, and that people, or is this, what does, what would, what do these funds cover, that people pay, is this just a supplement tuition?
Yeah, it's basically we cut the cost of the kids.
So it's four hundred dollars to go, so we did a fundraising campaign to lower the, for scholarships buses, and to lower the cost to all the kids.
Okay.
Yeah, so nobody's paying over two hundred and twelve dollars out of a one campaign.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
And was it, uh?
Fundraising effort was intense.
Mark.
Yeah, Mark.
Berlin, Berlin Insurance made a huge donation to go to transportation, so that's awesome, thank you.
Thank you for the buses.
But so you still need money to get, to keep that two twelve per kid?
Yeah, so what happens was when I calculated, um, these, there were so many spreadsheets, but there must have been a formula that was wrong. So the initial one hundred fifty four dollar deduction from the kids should have been a hundred and thirty four. Essentially, anyone that had a balance will owe them twenty dollars.
I think also, Julie, we had some last minute kids that decided to go that weren't going, I think there was just so many.
There were so many moving parts here, and this is all like, once, once it's back running regularly, this won't be, we won't have the same challenges like we did this year. Yeah, but, but it's, it's a little, it's just a little more, because, because they leave Tuesday. So because time is of the essence, getting that fourteen hundred dollars is not an issue, because we're just gonna send it back out to parents and say.
Everyone has to pay twenty more dollars.
Put it on, no problem, done. Uh, but the issue is that they leave Tuesday, so we have to cut the check. And if, so the parents send in checks for twenty dollars, it won't process in time. So what we have on the avenue is we're exploring.
But if we got twenty, we could figure it out. What is, what is the avenue now, is that a GoFundMe, or is that what?
This year, the dog, obviously.
No, no.
No, if anybody wants to give more money.
Oh, so, well.
Where do they send their donations, Julie, tell the people.
If anyone wants to donate now, we're gonna just have people write checks right up to nature's classroom. So not parents, you want twenty dollar checks, you want. Really, so I, was that what you, that too? I was sold not that, because the, it takes us a while to process, right? If we were leaving a week from today, parents could send in twenty dollars and it's great, no problem, because we get it processed. But because we leave Tuesday, we have to pay this maximum amount, at this point, if anyone wants to donate, write it up to nature's classroom, and they'll get submitted with the final papers and address.
Yes, yes.
Thanks.
For cash.
I don't know that they, it's.
No, but we can take cash.
At this moment, we'll take cash.
We'll take cash.
Just gonna say, we can take that.
Wait, we see.
Because it's a check, yeah.
Yeah.
Alright.
I mean, we, we, yeah, we, we, I think we're good.
Anybody who wants to donate to nature's classroom, contact Julie.
Yeah, just text me. It's okay, we'll, 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 we'll.
Alright, so the motion has been made and seconded, so can we have a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Alright, the motion passes. And may I have a motion to accept the fiscal year twenty two audit?
So moved.
Megan?
Second.
Julie? Any discussion on that, questions? Alright then, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Alright, five oh, that motion passes, I have an aye as well. Uh, that is the last business item, so we've got a little bit of time. Does anybody have any future agenda item proposals? I've already talked about the policies that we'll be updating, um, anybody have any?
Um, I know last week we talked about the Fuller Foundation donation, then no, because that could be assigned to one of the subcommittees, students, success, acknowledge.
Yeah. Yeah, because we have to talk to them, is that right?
I saw in the choir with Joyce and Ross Fuller calling up, so I do know.
Okay, yeah, so we'll get the success committee working on that, maybe, uh, talk, we'll have a meeting next week, maybe. Anybody else have anything?
I have something, this is more like creative, though.
Okay.
I don't know if that would purview. If we don't have too much on our agenda, maybe when we forward, we invite a student from each grade to come in and just talk about maybe highlight from the year.
Yeah, I, and ask Caroline, so I can get that for class one to commit. Um, you know, they're a little shy or.
Yeah.
Don't wanna come to meeting, but yeah.
We need like the little guys, too. I would love that.
Nothing to, yeah, seven o'clock.
Yeah, listen, that's fine.
Even in the elementary schools.
Just come in and tell us what you're doing, or what you're looking forward to doing, or. Anything.
So what are we gonna do, have a principal try to rile that up?
Yeah.
So you're also, what would have John?
Some John going, busy.
John's gonna.
He's going, actually, you can think about it while he's, he's, um, scavenging nature's classroom.
Yeah.
He's the administrator guy. So nice.
That's a really good idea.
Yeah.
And just say what they loved about school, or like for the little kids, you could just say, what, what do you wish?
I will say wish, well, like what's your favorite, but then like you wish.
I think that's a great idea, because even the little kids, like they have so much valuable knowledge, like, oh, what, you know, what do you, yeah. What's your favorite, what do you like, and what do you not like so much? What do you think might need to change?
Carrots, I like the carrots.
If the kids who wrote that history book can come in, that'd be good, too, you know?
My son would be like, I don't like reading.
And then they know a school committee and.
Well, yeah, it's actually a good idea to do as an annual thing, because that, and you get a different kid coming in every year, so, yeah, it kind of teaches them about.
Yeah.
Witnessing governance and community involvement.
Speaking of involvement, uh, we do need to get conversations going with the PTOs, uh, on just, you know, future plans. Just see if, I know they're interested in working together more, right? This past few months was pretty good, I think, pretty good work by them, and good relationship building, so.
Yeah.
Maybe talk to them for something for next month, or maybe through some committees or something.
A great idea, too.
See that, yeah, 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 yes.
See that.
Yes, thanks to them as well, they're big. And then, yeah. Yeah, Lisa?
And I spoke with a mom from VNS, and she was really like trying to push for getting more of the performing arts, like the string instruments, you know, for the younger kids and theater and things like that. I don't know if this is something that, you know, we would discuss or have anything to do with, but she said, I'll do anything to help, you know? I think she already sent like, you know, letters or emails. I think she already sent like, you know, letters or emails to, um, staff, and she said she would like manage a booster club, you know, to raise on tour and everything. She's like all in, and will have to do anything she can to make it happen.
Yeah, those are the types of things that I'm, I'm talking about, the parent groups and things, like.
Yeah.
With the plan that we have, the three-year plan that we have, right, I think, you know, more performing arts is part of the plan. It didn't go to the budget situation this year, but, yeah, for next year, that's, you know, we need to, what do the parents want, what are they gonna support, what are the voters gonna support? For the schools.
There used to also be like an after-school program, we were open to, and that, that was like, you could do like an art class, or like there was American Girl class, Lego, so. You know, there could be like maybe a drama, so maybe we have that now, Jessica, and Berlin, it used to be in Boston, right, and now Berlin, uh, PTO.
Yeah.
The League has a really extensive program going on, and all those pieces.
Yeah, they call, yeah, the original.
Origin program.
Yeah, it's really, yeah.
Yeah, it's like every month they do a different activity.
Is it like every week, or just one day, or?
It's every month, right?
Yeah, they all sorts of things sprinkled throughout.
Yeah.
Yeah, so Boylston needs, uh, does that link run that in Berlin?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The little three runs it. But see, that's the thing, I think it takes a person committed to doing that, and she's taken that.
And she's a volunteer, yeah, this is the first time, it's, it's terrific, yeah.
So I mean, the program in Boylston, it used to be like, run for four weeks or something like that, it was like every Monday or whatever, an hour.
Same, we do those, but she does day ones, too, she does one that runs like, they do a theater one once a week.
Yeah.
Or they'll do like a dream catcher, make dream catchers one day, on a different day of that month, make wind chimes.
Yeah, they had someone come in, was the person from Hudson or something, the art studio?
Oh, for the, uh, wind chime one?
A couple of different ones, but I think that was one, yeah, like, uh, she run an art studio, she came in and did something with kids, like, stuff like that.
Yeah.
It's so cool.
Yeah.
It's kind of.
And then pay.
And then ask them, hey, yes, and so, pay for, you pay.
Yeah, you pay whatever, twenty bucks, five dollars.
And then you're just a student. Yeah, that's how, Boylston used to have, last year, Boylston had Lego club, but the principal organized that in Boylston, um, the Lego League.
But even like nine, two thousand nineteen, twenty, there was.
There was more stuff.
Who organized all that?
I think it was Faye Sullivan, honestly, I know she did, like, she did American Girl, and there was, it was art, I mean, and even that happens back to Ohio's.
Ah.
Elementary school, too, like, there was like bead class, and it ran for like four weeks, one day a week.
Yeah. Yeah. That's a hu, I think that's really important for kids that don't play sports especially, I think kids need something after, or like parents are like, I don't wanna do after-school program. Because they don't, you know, whatever, for whatever reason, um, the enrichment is huge, so I, I agree, if we can get that, figure out a way to, yeah, we have gotta work with the PTOs and whether or not it's a.
Yeah.
An employee that's already working at the school that takes it on as a project, or if the PTO has a volunteer that they could assign that.
That's the key, is the volunteers.
Well, yeah, that would be huge, cuz then.
I mean, but people do, they did pay historically, so I'm.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yes, vendors will get paid, yeah.
The vendor gets paid, but you'd have to pay, parents probably have to pay the PTO that works in Berlin. Yeah, and then the PTO manages, so yeah, that's more, a lot, that's another thing for the PTO, but yeah.
It's a vendor, yeah. They do a great job.
Sewing class, yeah.
Yeah, Link really does it.
They do a great job, Amy and Kyle and that, they really do.
Yeah, that's a, that's a lot of work for them, yeah, yeah, we could do that.
But that's where PTOs link together, so maybe Jackie and Kyle already.
Yeah, now they're, now they're together, yeah, that's, that's the thing, right, that's one dish.
Yes.
You know, yeah.
Those can. And they can recruit some more people, right, and then they can rec- recruit some more, like this huge incoming kindergarten class in Boylston, hopefully they can recruit some more parents.
And you could also do, you could use the same vendors, you know, one in Berlin, one in one, two.
Yes, so it's easy for planning.
Running, yes, it's very easy.
Do the same program, yeah, you just need a parent that's gonna organize, so you get a new, that's the other huge thing.
I'll see if they wanna come in next time and, uh.
Parents to step up.
Oh, good idea.
Well, it's not.
Yes.
I guess if you put a call out, be like, hey, this is what we're thinking, I think you'd get a lot of return emails.
I, I think so, I think that big thing.
Like this mom, like.
Yes, she, this mom would probably, yes, she could run, if she run, maybe she would wanna be interested in working.
You should Kyle and doing the enrichment.
Yeah, so.
You should honestly just run the same program they're running, not those exact, for, I mean, how they have their website, how they have it set up, it's, it's, it's beautifully done, very easy.
We just need someone in Boylston that will work with, so yeah, I think, you're right, Jess.
I'd love to, uh, like agility programs.
Yes, maybe, maybe we'll be willing to come to Boylston, I don't know.
Maybe Julie. Yeah.
Maybe I would.
Meditation.
Meditation will be great to do.
I'll see if they're interested in coming to speak to us, Jackie.
Yeah, in June, that would be great to get something like that up and running for September, I don't know, the PTO's meeting this summer.
I feel sure.
Yeah.
Alright, I don't.
That's a lot of work.
Alright, and, yeah.
There were one, someone asked me on the way out of the town meeting, like, oh, why wouldn't you get more kindergarten teachers instead of an age for each three, and I was like, my friend was surprised at that.[1770.21]